We'll call to order the meeting of the Sebastian City Planning and Zoning Commission for July 18th. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Ms. Cottenberg?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Reverend.
Mr. Maude?
Here.
Mr. Kitzelbach is not here. Mr. Yugen?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, as for announcements this evening, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Simmons are both excused this evening, and Mr. Maude will be voting as our alternate tonight. The minutes from our previous meeting will be available at our next meeting, since we've had two in a row a week apart. The first order of business is listed on our agenda as a public hearing. Mr. Stokes, if you will read into the record.
Yes, ma'am. Public hearing, large-scale comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment for proposed 1,118 acre annexation. Graves Brothers Company applicant, properties located adjacent and south of CR 510, a total of 1,047 acres, more or less, of subject parcels requesting initial land uses, less road and canal right-of-ways. Request is for CG Commercial General, CL Commercial Limited, IN Industrial, INS Institutional, MDR Medium Density Residential, LDR Low Density Residential, V L D R Very Low Density Residential, and C Conservation Land Uses.
Thank you. At the request of City Council, we will be tabling this matter this evening to our meeting of August 15th. I'll entertain a motion from one of the commissioners to that effect, please.
Madam Chair, if we could, when the motion is made, if you could, the person making the motion, if you could put the date and time certain, just to say, August 15th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
What time are we going to do this?
August 15th, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay. I have a motion to go ahead and table this item, the public hearing recommendation to City Council, the large-scale comprehensive, excuse me, plan, future land use map amendment. Do I have to read everything?
Just the date.
For, tabled for August 15, 2019, at 6:00 PM.
We have a motion and a second. Voice vote, please. We can have no discussion on something that we are not discussing. Yes. No discussion on the motion being tabled.
This is a, sir?
Sir?
No. No, no.
Just for purposes of the commission, a tabling is a procedural matter which is within the sole discretion of the commission.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. A voice vote, please. Voice vote, please.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Ms. Cottenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Yugen?
Yes.
Ms. Cottenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Maude?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could just make an announcement that ties in with that, just for everybody here and for anybody that's watching at home. The reason pursuant to Florida law, the reason we table something to a date and time certain is because there will be no further advertisement. So, anyone who may have gotten a notice in the mail about this hearing will not be getting a new notice.
That's what the law provides for, and that's why we use date and time certain. So, just want to make sure everybody understands, there will be no new notices sent out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the quasi-judicial hearing, which I will now open. Have any of the commissioners had any ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
No?
Yeah.
Thank you. Could we swear in the applicant and the staff, please?
Madam Chair, I want to verify if the applicant is here. I don't see the representative from MBV Engineering. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pittsley is here. Good, thank you.
He was hiding.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is a new site plan, AT&amp;T retail store, 1,500 square foot building with parking, landscaping, and stormwater at 1671 US Highway 1, CR Commercial Riverfront Zoning District. Anybody who wishes to speak on this item, if you could stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in for this quasi-judicial hearing.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
If the applicant will please make his presentation.
I'm here to support.
For the record, if you will identify yourself, please.
My name is Bill Pittsley. I reside at 2955 First Place Vera Beach.
Thank you.
I represent the applicant, and I'm here to offer support if needed. I think at this time, staff is offering approval, so I don't know what else I could add.
Okay, thank you. If the staff will make a presentation of your findings, please.
Yes. Commissioners, this is an application for a request of a demolition of an existing building and a construction of a new 1,500 square foot retail building along with parking, stormwater, landscaping, site amenities that's required by the Land Development Code. We have provided you with the staff report with the items that is required by the code and have noted that they have met all of those requirements. Based on the size of the building, they are required to have 13 parking spaces, which they are providing, landscaping for the riverfront overlay district requirements. They are, they are working with, I have seen the document, I'll explain with the conditions, but they are going to, they plan on interconnecting with the Tire Kingdom site to the north, which will give them access to Davis Street, which has the curb cut on US 1 to head north. Otherwise, if they were not connecting with that site, they'd only be able to do a right out and have to do a U-turn if they were heading north to the Walmart or anything like that. So, we are happy that they are working with Tire Kingdom, and we are requiring a copy of that recorded cross-axis easement before they are allowed to get building permits. They also are needing to go the rear of the Tire Kingdom site to connect to the utilities that is on Davis Street. So, they are also working with Tire Kingdom to provide a private utility easement for the AT&amp;T site for their water and sewer connection onto Davis Street. Again, that'll be another recorded document that we will need before building permits can be issued. We have also, as part of any new site plan, we always require an environmental site assessment. We received the initial report from Tim Maslin, and there were no tortoises or any type of fawn or anything that needed to be protected, except it was close enough to a protected survey, excuse me, scrub jay area. And so, the recommendation with the first report was that a formal scrub jay survey for the site was conducted. And we directed them to conduct, to talk to Fish and Wildlife to get the parameters of the study, what Fish and Wildlife needed. Fish and Wildlife came back and said that they were far enough away from a scrub jay habitat that they didn't need to do any mitigation or do a full survey. However, they had a recommendation, and I'd like to read from the report. It is recommended to leave the scrub oak shrubs and the live oak trees within the property landscape buffers undisturbed. And additionally, we recommend the proposed landscape plan to utilize live and scrub oak species as best practical. And so, we would like to modify our condition number two to address that, and I will further explain it as after I finish the, we go through the staff report. I also, too, we had attached the email from Joe Shulkey, and he had some additional comments I neglected to kind of inform you, that Joe Shulkey was the city consulting engineer on this project. We rotate our consulting city engineers, and there were a couple of minor comments that we couldn't address in order to make this date a meeting, and so that also is one of our conditions of approval. I'd also like to point out that on the colored elevations, the building shows canvas awnings, and yet the black and white architectural drawings does show more of a hard canopy, metal canopies. It will be the ones that are shown on the black and white, the architectural drawings, not the colored elevations. But that was a good speculative of what the building's going to look, the finished building looked like. With that, we feel that all of the Land Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and Riverfront Overlay District regulations have been met. We recommend approval with the following conditions. I'd like to revise number two and add a number four. And let me read them in for the record. Number one would be a copy of the recorded cross-axis easement and utility easement documents to be submitted before issuance of the building permit. We'd like to revise number two to state, based on the recommendation of the revised environmental report, proposed canopy trees noted on the landscape plan should be adjusted to utilize more live and scrub oak species while adjusting the proposed amounts of southern red cedars. Acknowledgment from the consulting city engineer that all the requested revision comments have been addressed. And number four would be, after installation of utilities in the easement on the Tire Kingdom property, that landscaping shall be replanted according to the approved plan for Tire Kingdom. Because I have a feeling some of those hedges and trees may need to be relocated for them to lay those sewer lines, and we would like it then to be replanted according to the approved landscape plan. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from our commissioners, and we'll...
Can you, I have one. Dory, would you mind reading your second condition, please?
Sure. The gist of it is, is based on the revised, the recommendation from Fish and Wildlife to adjust some of the landscaping. On the landscape plan, they had quite a few red cedars. There are some live oaks, but we would like them to adjust the amount of those cedars to adapt what Fish and Wildlife is requesting. So, it would be based on the recommendation of the revised environmental report, proposed canopy trees noted on the landscape plan should be adjusted to utilize more live and scrub oak species while adjusting the proposed amounts of southern red cedars.
Other questions? Do you have any other questions?
I just have one, I'd like to make a comment and a question. The outline of the building is actually very handsome, as far as I think it'll be a great addition to that area there, and we do appreciate the owners having confidence in Sebastian. The only comment that I would make, I would like to see more of a fishing village theme that we keep talking about all the time, which I really don't see anything on the plans related to that, as we've discussed many times with new buildings going up. So, I think that should be incorporated within the building itself. But again, we welcome the addition of AT&amp;T, the building, to Sebastian, and wish you best of luck with it.
We did try, we did get added to the architecturals a few things, so there is the metal canopies. We do have some of the faux shutters that they put around windows. It is a stucco building, not necessarily T-111, but we've tried to get some hardscaping on some of our newer properties. And if you noticed, around the stormwater pond, there will be a kind of a split-rail fence, kind of as the protection, so that the public doesn't go in there, whatever. But there is, we're trying to add some of that hardscaping onto our sites to kind of get that old fishing village. You know, if more hardscaping is requested, or I don't know at this point if it's prudent to get a different kind of siding material, but we were okay with the design. It meets the minimum requirements anyways of the district architectural requirements.
Mr. Maude?
No comments.
I don't have any questions, but I think it's a great addition and get rid of the eyesore that's sitting there right now.
I would further Mr. Carter's comments about the theme. We still don't have any booklet brochure to give an idea of what we're talking about. It's in the codes, granted. And I spoke to City Council about it a couple of weeks ago, and the decision was made that we use existing buildings as an example, but the drawing I see here doesn't have, doesn't look like it has a metal roof. It's hard to tell. That would be one thing. And some of the other things that are in the code apparently aren't visually that apparent, so they're not included. But that's a concern I have, that we're marching forward with new buildings in the area that is our, called a riverfront area, and they're not, things aren't being included. And I know our staff can only go so far with what the codes are and what they show. So, that being said, I have a couple of questions. On drawing C6, there's a driveway apron on the southwest corner of the lot, and I mentioned this to staff earlier, and it looks like it's a dead end that would lead to the lot directly adjacent to the south. In other words, facilitating more of a pass-through to help out with one-way egress off of this particular site. But I don't see anything on there, and I looked, that would indicate a tire stop or, you know, some type of signs that would warn people that it's the end at this point. It may be extended in the future, but it also depends on the property next door cooperating when that is sold and the parking lot's designed. So, I think at minimum, there was a mention of some signs, vertical signs, à la stop sign sort of a thing. The square turned on an angle with red reflectors on it, but I couldn't find it on the drawing. I looked.
Mr. Roth, if you look on sheet C5, and in that area, there is an octagon with the number seven on it, and it refers up to a chart with number seven, and then it says the detail is on sheet C8. And C8 does have the detail of the barriers that will be put there so that there isn't any through traffic.
I noticed how quickly you pointed that out. I spent all the time looking and couldn't find it. But I'll take your word for it, that's there. I'm not a fast expert, but I've looked at a lot of drawings, but I just couldn't see it, and...
It's indicated on sheet C5.
Okay. I have a question about on C6, there's, looks like a, some type of a real small retention pond sort of a thing in front of the building, with a drainpipe going out of the back leading to the major retention pond. Is that going to be a live pond with water in it consistently, or is it just a dry basin?
It's, will mostly be dry, it'll be grassed, but it's there. I believe they added roof drains, so I think some of the water from the building itself will be directed there, and then based on the catch basin inverts and experts, it will flow to the, to the, to the main pond, to the rear of the building, to the west of the building. So, after a heavy rain, there may be some water in there, but it's designed to filtrate that water through, and once it reaches a level, it'll go to the rear.
Okay. I noticed that it drops from 28 feet as it traverses toward the back down to what's like 26. So, there's enough of a drop there to get the water out. I was just concerned about if it's not an actively maintained wet area, then it's going to turn into being an eyesore.
Yeah, neither one of these are wet ponds. They're designed as dry ponds. It's not quite in the sand ridge, in a ridge, but it's based on the soil materials. It's a very porous material that will drain very well.
Okay. It looks like the other question, two questions I had have been answered. I guess the other one would be, is it implied, do we need to add it as a condition that all future site signs advertising the property, that that would be, fall under the codes, that they would need to come back for approval of any new signs to go on the property, or does that need to be a condition of the approval?
I believe, because we always check to make sure, it is somewhere in either the general notes or all, that there's always a, I believe it's also on the architectural drawings, there's always a note. So, who's ever bidding on the job and the contractor, it is a separate permit, that these signs are not being proved, the size and all that, that there's a separate permit and review required.
I saw the note about a separate permit, and I just wanted to make sure that that were covered there, that they can't just move forward. Okay. The drainage change in elevation that Mr. Shulkey was recommending, that's in the front sidewalk area as it leads out to the main sidewalk along US 1? Is that where his comments were?
I believe it's the, his comments have to do, there is, there is a sidewalk on that side of US 1, and there's a regulation, and Mr. Pittsley maybe can speak on this, of the slope that you have to have for handicap accessibility. And based on that, too, there may have to have some hand railings, and so that just needs to be adjusted based on something he saw. I know he'll work with Mr. Pittsley, and they'll get that. We would have probably caught that at the building permit stage also, because that is something that the building official is, he reviews for ADA compliance, too. So, if it does have something to do with the slope of the sidewalk, we'd like to get it on the plan, but it will, it will have to be in that ADA compliance with those regulations, and we'll catch that at either the site plan or the building permit stage. I believe he had some other, some minor grading revisions, and they were based on, too, they were requiring, it may show on the plan already, on the south property, because you have to keep all the stormwater on your property. It's either a swale or some sort of berm that will make sure that none of that property flows off onto the property to the south, in addition to that, this is a stormwater pond.
Just to clarify the point we were talking about earlier, this really isn't a ramp, per se. It's just a slope on the sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay. So, it's not going to be a stumbling block, because it's right out near the main entrance in the parking area? Okay, that's the extent of my questions.
Mr. Alvarez?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. The easement to Davis that will lead to Davis Street, is that going to attach to the properties in perpetuity to the land, so that it will always be there?
As I read the draft of the cross-axis easement, it is going to be between these two tenants. The property owner, Tire Kingdom is not the property owner, they're the tenant for that. And it's also being set up, though, because it is a, not necessarily a condition, but FDOT is kind of hoping it happens. They like to see the interconnections. And so, there was some verbiage based on their issuance of the FDOT driveway permit, that they wanted to see an access easement. As I've seen it set up, though, that it can be a, it can be rescinded with a different tenant, but with these two tenants, it is, and there was nothing in our code that required it or requested. On 512, there is an interconnection regulation requirement, but on US 1, we feel it's prudent planning to have that interconnection, but nothing in our code that required it. So, we're happy to see that it is going to be. But yes, if there were different tenants down the road, and they, somebody else at the Tire Kingdom and requested that, that they would be able to put barriers between the two sites. But the AT&amp;T, that doesn't necessarily block any access, they still have, they're still going to have that right in and that right out. So, there's the access that would be required per our code.
Okay, so we're doing this, but it is not, is it an FDOT requirement?
No, it's not, based on the state. It really is more of a civil matter between the two sites, so it's just, that's why we just wanted to get a copy of it, though, before building permits are issued. If Tire Kingdom came back and said they didn't, they were not going to agree to that easement, there was a plan, because we just found out that they were agreeing to it, there was a plan that already showed also some barriers between the two sites. They were still going to do the stubout with the barriers, so that you couldn't interconnect, and Tire Kingdom has changed.
My concern was that I don't want us to end up, and I don't want the owners to end up with a piece of property that could not be used in the future.
No, there definitely is the right in off of US 1 and the right out to get back onto US 1.
That answers that for me, thank you. As to the issues of incorporating a more riverfront look, river fishing village look, I believe the building is hardy plank. Or was that changed?
I may have misspoke. Yes, it is hardy plank. There's the metal roof.
And there is a metal roof, and I noticed that the drawing shows a cupola.
Cupola, we got, we got the gooseneck lighting we requested, the fence, the split-rail fence, the shutters. We're doing our best to try and get that, those type of architectural embellishments onto the buildings.
Instead of the little pointy obelisk on top of the cupola, could we not put the whale?
The, oh, the...
As an ornament? I've seen them, you see them all over on the, it's just an ornamental thing which might, to me, it's better than the ropes that rot, so.
If it's a request...
I wouldn't make that a requirement, but a request. I don't have any other questions.
I missed one.
You have one?
I had written notes on different of the drawings here. What is the actual color scheme of the building? I know you said that this...
Well, I just wanted to tell you that the awnings would be different, but that is the color scheme. So, it will be a gray building. It's got the, I believe it had the black metal roof, more of a darker gray metal roof, black awnings. That is the color. That's why we do provide the color elevations. That will be the color scheme of the building. I just wanted to point out that that drawing showed canvas awnings, and they are going to change those to more of a hard metal type of canopy. Which are, the metal canopies are shown on the architectural drawings, but that is the color proposed.
Thank you. Now, I will open the floor for anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request. Seeing no one. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the request? Would the applicant like to respond to any of the questions or issues that we brought up?
So one thing I can clarify, I guess, on the sidewalk ramp to US-1, yes, if the sidewalk exceeds 5%, then a handrail would be required. So we can take a look at that and see if there's a way we can reduce the slope to below 5%. It'd be ideal with no handrail. If a handrail's required, we'll add that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any further summarization from the staff?
I know staff are ready for approval, and we need to verbatim read the four conditions.
Any additional discussion between the commissioners? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion. My official motion maker, I saw you making notes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the approval of the site redevelopment plan consisting of the demolition of existing building and construction of a new 1,500-square-foot retail building along with required parking, stormwater landscaping, and site amenities at the aforementioned location. With the conditions that staff had incorporated in their discussion.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Before we have a vote, could we please clarify the staff recommendations?
Can we read them, please?
There are four. The first one is that a copy of the recorded cross-access agreement and utility easement documents to be submitted before issuance of the building permit, that would allow them to land clear and get going on the demolition without, and then we would need those. Based on the recommendation of the revised environmental report, proposed canopy trees noted on the landscape plan should be adjusted to utilize more live and scrub oak species while adjusting the proposed amounts of southern red cedars. Acknowledgement from the Consulting City Engineer that all revision comments have been addressed. And after installation of the utilities in the easement on Tire Kingdom's property, landscaping shall be replanted according to the approved landscape plan for Tire Kingdom.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have our motion. We have a second. Now a roll call, please.
Mr. Yugen?
Approved.
Ms. Cottonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Maude?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Unanimous in favor.
Thank you. Thank you. We're very happy to have this sudden addition. Thank you. Okay, moving on through our agenda. We have no unfinished business. The next section that we would ask for is input from the public. However, I caution you that public input may not be on anything that was on the agenda. Anyone wishing to make any public input?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Damian Gilliam's. I can be reached at sebastianpropertyowners.com.
Thank you.
I have an address here also, 1623 US-1 Sebastian.
Thank you.
I, two things that I wanted to bring, since you mentioned, since the item you tabled to a certain date that you had previously, you did not discuss it, which was the annexation of the 1,047 acres that's coming into our community. First of all, what I want...
We can't discuss that.
Not going to discuss that. What I'm going to discuss is the right to advertise so the public knows when you're going to have that meeting. But because you did that vote and didn't allow me to come up and speak to argue the point, that when you do a date of uncertain or date of certain, they don't have to advertise. There's no full transparency as to what's going on when you annex 1,047 acres into our community. And the purpose is, it's done in the dead heat of the summer, when nobody's here. They're all up north. That's why developers do this. They don't do it when everybody's in the community. They don't reach out to the community and present what they're doing. They wait till we all leave. That's why I wanted to speak earlier when you made that motion. And when you make a motion in a second, there should be discussion. And there should not only be discussion on the part of the P&amp;Z board, but the public. You represent the people. You should allow the people, if there's a point of order, you should allow the people to come up and make their point so that when you do make your motion, the members can vote on something that's good for the community. Now, this is going to be postponed to August 15th.
We are not talking about a this. If you're going to talk about our procedure, we are following the prescribed procedure, and you can certainly address that. We are not talking about a this.
And that's why I'm asking you on the public input in the future, when you have a continuation of date certain or uncertain, whatever it may be. It involves advertising and not advertising. And it's important that they advertise, so people know in this community what's exactly going on. So now you're going to have a meeting August 15th, and it will not be advertised. So again, be open-minded. You represent the community. You represent the people that care about this community. You should want to hear them out, especially if there's a point of order. There's three or four votes that can override the chair. And you can tell the chair, we'd like to hear what he has to say.
Excuse me.
So...
We've discussed this, and as commissioners, we took the advice of legal counsel and staff and city council, and that's how we're proceeding. We can't change it.
I understand that.
And we don't need you to tell us what to do.
I understand that, but let me tell you something else.
No, we don't need you to tell us what to do, sir.
I'm talking to the chair. So let me make a point. Legal counsel many, many years ago gave the planning and zoning and council advice, and they went to court. And guess what? Counsel was wrong. The court, and the appellate court overturned the counsel and demanded that they issue the permit. So please, don't make the argument counsel is always correct. That's not always true. And if I, you want, I can point the date and time.
Really, I don't need a lecture to be talking about this.
Sir, it's my time. Let me speak. Let me speak. Don't interrupt me. So counsel is not always correct. Okay? And don't be afraid to ask why. Let me move on. The bottom line is this, Mr. Chairman. Let's just be full transparent. Let's just get everything out. This is a big annexation into the community. It's under public input. You didn't discuss it yet. I have a right to discuss it under public input. But here's the most important thing I'd like to talk to you about tonight. I have some property that I like to do some sand mining on. Am I required to get a sand mining permit?
Yes.
Okay. So, and to do excavation to remove sand, you're supposed to get a permit. Why is it that the city of Sebastian did not get a permit to sand mine and remove sand at the cemetery? Why didn't they not get a site plan? Why did they get a grubbing permit when they gave somebody 18 months to sell and remove sand off of city property? Doesn't the city set an example? You just heard staff. You need a permit. Just heard it right on tape. You're excavating and sand mining 20,000 cubic yards of fill on US-1 at the cemetery.
Sand mining and excavation can be different.
Excuse me.
Well, you can't use what I say before, and now I can't speak to clarified.
So my point is this. This board, as the P&amp;Z board, is to be overlooking site plans. And when you're doing, and getting ready to put roads in, and getting ready to DEP work, Department of Environmental Protection on sand ridges, you're required to have proper permitting. The city did not do that. And if you check with your staff, because I did already, and I got all copies of everything, they issued permits for not sand mining, not removing 20,000 cubic yards of fill, which I was required to do. They gave them a grubbing permit. So if the city is going to go ahead and play and issue rules and procedures, they should follow them themselves, the same thing. They should be doing the same thing. And that's my concern. This board knows what transpired, because there was a body found on that property, and everybody in the community knew exactly what was going on down there, even city council. But nobody raised the red flag and said, hey, what's going on down there? How could they be issuing, how could they be having all that fill that our miner, the city manager, said they were going to sell?
I think we ought to close this.
This is under public input, sir. Please, don't be rude.
We do have time limits, don't we?
Yeah, not five minutes yet. I'm looking at the clock.
Okay.
So again, if the city's going to go ahead and demand other people to require permits, require site plans, they should be doing the same thing, Madam Chairman. Okay? And this board has a requirement to follow through, to follow through, to make sure that they follow the law as well. They're not above the law. Okay? And there's a proper way to dispose of assets of the city. You must appraise them, and then you auction them. You don't give them to your friends. This board here needs to be held accountable as well. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs...
The cat calling the kettle black.
Okay.
I have a question regarding this. I have a question regarding this story. That issue that Mr. Delman brought up, was there a procedure that was, should have brought that before our board?
So I do want to say that this issue has been brought up before city council, and I'd rather this board not discuss it. It's, it's being handled by city council. I don't think it's an issue that we should discuss at this commission.
Okay.
Commissioners matters? Anybody?
Nope.
I'd like to know where the cupcakes are.
And the bonbons.
Yeah. Okay. City attorneys matters?
I have nothing, although somebody left a cupcake for me for my birthday, so I would like to thank you.
That's where the cupcake went.
But maybe leaving it up for everyone, sorry.
Okay. Staff matters?
None tonight. Thank you.
Ray Jaren?
Thank you, Al.